There we go. Thank you. This is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, October 21st, 2025. We've got some very large issues on our agenda today, not the least of which is the first. It's the Headquarters Hotel Development Agreement update. So Katie Westbrook from 3CDC is here to give us an update on this. Thank you for being here, and we welcome you to the podium.
Good morning, Commissioners. I also have Reed Scott, Vice President of Development with Portman. So he'll be chiming in a little bit on the specific items related to, like, from the developer's perspective. So bear with us as we tag team. I do have a presentation which has pulled up. Okay, so to start, just kind of reframing the area of downtown we were talking about, the Convention District, which sits at the southwest quadrant of downtown Cincinnati, collectively between 3CDC, the city, and the county. When everything is all said and done, we are anticipating about $1.2 billion being invested into this relatively small section of downtown Cincinnati. And so the impact is really going to be quite impressive when we're all said and done. Moving on to what has been completed, just highlighting under $400 million worth of projects that have been finished. The most recent one is Paycor Headquarters, which includes the new home for Paycor's office on the second floor. And then Sal's, our restaurant, will be opening at the corner, just in a few weeks, actually. And then a few other projects in the mix, really focused on office as well, and then a little bit of residential. In terms of what is happening actively, in terms of being under construction and what we are in predevelopment on, it's almost $830 million worth of investment. So everyone is familiar with the Convention Center renovation. I'll highlight that, you know, the progress we've made there. And then we've also started construction on the Convention Center garage. And then we are anticipating starting construction on the hotel later this year. The Convention Center itself has been a really great success. If you've gone past the building, you'll be able to see that the facade has really taken shape. We are just about two months out from completing construction. We are really happy with the results. The building has been completely transformed. We are on schedule, so if you can believe, we will have completed $264 million worth of improvements in just 18 months. And the project buyout participation has also been a great success, with minority businesses participating at about 22.5%, which is above our original goal and just under our reach of 25%. And then women businesses at 13.7%, so just under our reach at 15%. And then union participation, which we didn't have a formal goal on, but we did see participation at 61%. Just a few photos to show you the progress inside. Really finishes are going in, so you can get a feel for how light and bright the space is as well, with all the added windows along both the east and the south sides of the building. I think one of the most exciting pieces, from my point of view, is the transformation of the former Millennium site and, you know, converting it into the Elm Street Plaza. I think it's really gonna not only set the Convention Center separate from its competitors across the nation, but really soften this section of downtown and add something that our city is missing. Just across the street, we started construction on renovating the formerly known as Wex Garage. We've recently changed it to the Convention Center Garage. We worked with both the city and the county to purchase this in March of 2023. Really viewed this as a strategic acquisition to support the hotel project and the Convention Center and provide direct parking to both of those facilities. The construction we're undergoing right now is really focused on kind of enhancing both vehicular and pedestrian access to the north side of the garage and allowing it to connect to a future Sky Bridge that will link the garage to the hotel and the Convention Center. We are on track to finish construction on these improvements at the end of the first quarter in '26. You want to jump in, Reed?
Thank you again, everybody for having us here again today to give you an update. So some of this is a little bit of a rehash from, I think, our last update. But just to refresh everybody's memory, we are looking at a 700-key convention hotel with about 63,000 square feet of meeting space. That's net interior, about 17,000 square feet on a rooftop podium deck on the sixth floor with an event lawn for use. It's gonna be branded a Marriott. We'll have a full-service three-meal restaurant, bar, an executive lounge, other full-service amenities, and it will be connected directly to the Convention Center via Sky Bridge over Fifth to be installed. For a reminder of the team, I'm with Portman Holdings, the developer on the project. We have Skanska engaged as our general contractor. We're aided by the design assistants of Cooper Carey, Moody Nolan, Parker Torres, Bayer Becker, and CMTA as some of our major subs, and the public parties who are a great partner in this, including the county, city, and port, as well as the state. Supporting us on the financing side, we have Piper Sandler helping to raise the private financing, both debt and equity on this deal, as well as DePurna aiding in terms of the structuring of the public pieces of the project to fill out the capital stack. KMK is representing us on behalf of the legal services of this project. And we have Russ Brown and Dinsmore serving as bond counsel for us, with then Piper Sandler and Morgan Stanley serving as co-underwriters of the bonds themselves. Just for your update on anticipated timelines, we did start early site work with the removal of some environmental work that needed to be done earlier this year in January. And we are planning to go, hopefully, in the next month, approve our development agreement and room block agreements, as well as other key public party agreements, to enable our financing to close at the end of this year in December. And just for your consideration, a couple of nice renderings. These are some nighttime renderings we have run, so you might not have seen those. But that's overlooking the podium top and then the Fourth Street retail section of the building. So looking where our budget stands, I think this is materially in line with what we presented in our last meeting. We're looking at about $537-ish million in an overall capitalization for the project. That's comprised of about $48 million of estate grant, about $37 million that we expect to receive and benefit from the transformational mixed-use development tax credit that was approved for the project. We'll then be issuing a combination of bonds through the port for about $117 million in proceeds, plus about a $50 million contribution from the city broken out between city bonds and Convention Center savings to then supplement our envisioned private sources comprised of owner's equity and $63 million, a construction loan of about $178 million, key money from Marriott in the form of $17.5 million, and then interest earnings we accrue throughout that. And then going back on a topic we discussed during our last meeting, we've been carrying a conservative amount of contingency that shows up in this funding gap line item. But really, what we are looking to do over the next 45 days is qualify our GMP contract with the contractor, which then will inform how we substitute costs and hopefully bring the budget down to close that and really make it a negligible difference. So do you want to talk up?
So on the public finance side, there's really three key revenue sources that are being pooled together to support the state and port bonds and then also the city loan. So first, there is the city and county transient occupancy tax that is generated directly on this new hotel. So in total, it's about $4.8 million, with the county's portion making up just over $3 million of that. There's also the property tax TIF at $2.5 million. And then the new community authority, which is in process of being approved at the City of Cincinnati, which is estimated to generate $1.2 million. And that is really derived from a 1% fee that would be charged to customers at certain food and beverage establishments in this kind of central section of downtown. So in total, we're looking at $8.5 million in annual revenue that will support the $117 million in public bonds. And then third position will be used to support the $50 million loan from the city. Oops, I think I hit the wrong button. So as a reminder, when we came and spoke to you in June, the city was simultaneously approving a council for the issuance of the $50 million loan. So the bulk of that is made up in $40 million of proceeds from a planned bond issuance secured by city's non-tax revenue, and then the balance in $10 million from cash that was originally part of the city's $30 million that was invested into the Convention Center. But due to project savings, they're able to take that $10 million and shift it over to the hotel transaction. We did want to note that during the payoff period for the $50 million, the city and county have agreed that county TOT will not be used to pay back the $10 million portion of the, that is the city's cash contribution. So moving on to what is, you know, quote "new" information, to the county is really focused on the development agreement. So we've been working with Portman over the past year to negotiate the development agreement. It is a three-party agreement between the city, the county, and Portman. It is really focused on the public financing, creating of the revenue bonds, and then the abatement of the TOT between the city and the county, and then the creation of the property tax TIF. A few items to highlight that also are worthy of noting is, on the inclusion side, the hotel project will be asked to meet the same goals that were over at the Convention Center. So the 20% MBE with a reach at 25, 10% WBE with a reach at 15%. And then the one new item is that we are formalizing a union subcontractor goal. So primary trade contracts at 60% with a goal of 65%. So I think, to my knowledge, this is one of the first times a project like this will be committing to those goals. In addition, Portman is using best efforts to engage with local minority and women investors who want to take a look at the financing opportunities for the hotel project. So Portman, and really their financial advisor, Piper, is actively working with a group of potential investors here in Cincinnati. Portman is also providing commencement and completion guarantees. And... Moving on, a few key things we wanted to highlight, really centered around public protections. The first one being project savings. Given our experience on the Convention Center and the savings that we've experienced there, we wanted to make sure that should the project do very well during buyout and construction overall, we wanted to make sure the public parties had the ability to capture some of that and really use it to pay down the city loan, should there be any savings. So Portman has agreed to split savings at the end of the project 50-50 between themselves and the city with a cap at $17.5 million. The next one is an incentive recruitment payment. So should Portman decide within the first 10 years of opening that they are going to sell their real estate? They have agreed that if that sale price is over $325 million, that grows 3% annually, then the city and the county would receive 25% of sale proceeds above that sale price. The city and county have agreed that that, those additional proceeds would be distributed proportionately based on their shares of TOT contributed into the transaction. The third piece, you know, the reference of the Millennium Hotel was brought up very frequently during the negotiations of the development agreement. And we wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could to protect the public really long term. So we're looking, you know, 30, 45, 50 years down the road. Portman has agreed to enter into and record a restrictive operating covenant against the property that will really ensure that the hotel is operated at a certain standard for a minimum of 75 years. The minimum that we've agreed to is a standard set by Smith Travel Research, also known as Star, which is considered upper-scale hotel brand. That is what a Marriott is. And so we felt that that was an appropriate level to maintain. And then the last piece, the Hotel Development Agreement does require Portman to enter into two room block agreements with Visit Cincy. So there's the room block agreement on the new Headquarters Hotel, and then there'll be a second room block agreement on the Westin. And last slide here is really just outlining the next steps. So we are anticipating resolution to be presented on October 30th, Board Agenda, which will cover three items. The first one is exemption and pledge of the county's transient occupancy tax on this hotel site specifically, the authorization of the Hotel Development Agreement, and then the authorization of the cooperative agreement between the port, the city, and the county for the issuance and sale of revenue bonds.
I didn't know if you were finished. Thank you. Thank you so much to yourself and Reed for coming in. Really appreciate the update. Thankfully, you have updated, I think, all three of us before this meeting, so it does limit the amount of questions we have, perhaps. But I do want to recognize a couple of things that you talked about during the presentation. The first one, we had pretty aggressive goals when it came to MBE, WBE, and union. And so I am very glad to know that we exceeded a lot of those goals. I think it was really important to both the county and the city to have those goals and to have them realized during the construction. So thank you. I know it took some effort to get that done, and so I'm very grateful for that. I also, you noted, did you say $1.2 billion is the investment in this area with the hotel, with the Convention Center, with the garage? So I didn't know if I, I didn't see it in the report. Did you say $1.2?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And then just one other comment and then a quick question. I also wanted to note the green space, the plaza that's across from the Convention Center, where the Millennium used to sit. We are, we were very aggressive about acquiring that property a number of years ago, knowing that we would need it for something related to the Convention Center. There were some thoughts about the expansion of the exhibit space, which we, in the end, really didn't have the financing for, but rather we turned it into the screen space that can be used as programmable space for sessions and social events and things related to the convention, and then public space during the rest of the time. So I am really excited to see that. I was in the Hyatt the other day looking down on this space, and it's coming together. But I'll have to go back in a couple of weeks, maybe, when it's a little bit more built out. But I just think it's a really interesting and transformational asset to the Convention Center, and I'm glad the county played a part in putting that piece together for the whole project. One question, and I think I may have asked this of you when we met individually, I just want to put it out there in the public. So when you think about the Convention Center and to the north, there are the garages. What is going to be the status of the garages? Are they going to remain, or are they going to be torn down?
So there's two parking garages to the north, one on Plum and one on Elm. They're both owned by the Port Authority. We are working with, 3CDC is working with the port directly, actually to tear down the Elm Street Garage, so 609 Elm, and then the Plum Street one would remain. I think the port has some minimal improvement plans that they are going to be working on, signage and whatnot, in order to enhance that asset. But the plan is for demolition of the Elm Street Garage and really just getting it ready for a future development site down, you know, in the upcoming years.
So assuming, and I just want to ask you how this happened, if you know the answer. So this evaluation about how many parking spots we need related to the new hotel and the activity at the Convention Center, do you, so I assume that what used to be the Wex Garage and then the one garage that remains, is that the capacity, then, that we will have for the hotel and the Convention Center, or is there more capacity around there?
There's more capacity around there. There's a private garage just to the north on Plum Street. It's a small office, it's just like four floors. It used to be the Pure Romance Headquarters. There's public, so it's more private-facing, but I think that there are plans for that to be more of a public asset. And then 3CDC, in addition to the Convention Center Garage, we control about 2,500 other spaces within the vicinity. So based on our analysis and studies that we've had done, we feel that the parking in downtown is sufficient to meet both the hotel's needs and the Convention Center's requirements.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you for your presentation, and I also met with you earlier, as we'll see it. I just had a couple of comments. When I looked at, well, first of all, I'm really excited, as was said earlier, about the MBE, WBE, and the union participation. So that's really good that we were able to do that. And I know that you had to, everyone involved had to work very hard to make that happen. And I wrote down a note, the funding model. So I was just really glad when he presented the funding model, because as just someone who's watching this and you hear these numbers, Convention District plan is $264 million, New Convention, $536 million, right on this. And then you would think, the average person, if I wasn't a commissioner, I'd say, well, I don't have food, and I don't have housing, and I don't have senior services. But I want to make it very clear, for those that are watching this, did not impact our general budget. And so we will still be able to provide the direct services that people need. So I just wanted to make that very clear. And I think that was all that I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you. And you're right, we all did get a chance to ask questions. But I wanted to highlight some of the questions that I did ask, because all three of us can't talk to each other. So it's good to hear my colleagues' questions as well, and hopefully they get a chance to hear mine. But more importantly, the public gets a chance to have these questions brought up. And you've given some of the answers, so this will be helpful for them to have. Item number one was the fact that, let me just say that, when, and I wasn't here, but when Millennium deal went through, it was about $50-plus million. And just to give people understanding, we're not building a hotel replacement there. Millennium had 800 rooms. I am disappointed that we're paying way more, and we're only, we're getting 100 rooms less. I do think it's good that we have a room block, though. The Westin now has been acquired by the same group that is doing this hotel. And for me, I felt like, well, maybe they have more capacity, and they could have done 800 rooms if they can buy. Now they're getting a two, two hotels instead of one hotel in the marketplace. When you're booking conventions, they like to be in one hotel. If they do two across the street. So I just want to make sure we're being a little realistic about conventions, because I've booked a lot of them. There is not that, oh, you can walk a couple of blocks to the Westin, and you can get over here. That's going to be very difficult for a lot of conventions. My questions that I had were, in doing this, because we're not trying to just do a hotel to have a hotel, we're doing it to get more business. And the question was, does this increase our competitiveness in our competitive set? And you may not, I know you said CVB might have to answer to this, but I would like to have that before we move forward, because are we, if we're just in the same level of what we had as far as conventions, we are competing against Louisville, we're competing against St. Louis, you know, all those areas. And does this give us what we need to be competitive against them? So want to make sure that when, before we have that, I know you're saying you're going to get more information on that, but I just want to make sure we're not spending all this additional money at status quo. I do understand it's restricted funds, and I have asked Mr. Aludo to identify I do understand it's restricted funds, and I have asked Mr. Ludo to identify, in that restricted fund, there are things that we can do. I mean, some people are using their hotel occupancy tax to pay for their stadiums, their NFL stadiums, their baseball stadiums. We got a baseball stadium deal that's going to be coming up. So there are other things that we can use this restricted fund for, but we are maxing out. So can you maybe, I don't know if you could tell us that today, but I know you were saying, before we vote on it, you'll be able to give us some more information.
Yeah, so just last night, I shared some information direct from Visit Cincy with Holly, and so I think that's getting distributed to the commissioners this week, and you guys will have a chance to review that prior to the full meeting on the 30th.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. The second thing that I had asked about this, when we talk about the investment in the area, I just want to be clear that this is 98% government money, government tools, whether it's you can bond off of government, whether you're borrowing against government, and the government has the risk, or whether you get credits because you are a quasi nonprofit with government access. This is not necessarily a private corporation putting in the majority of the money. So I do want to say that taxpayers are on the hook in terms of paying these back. We guarantee money for one of the garages, we had to come up with some money to guarantee that. So some of it's cash, some of it's borrowing, but it's like going to the bank, we got a loan, there's interest, it's got to be paid back. Somebody's got to guarantee it, somebody's got to be responsible for it. So city and county will be on the hook, taxpayers-wise, to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So I wanted to make sure that people who are watching that kind of understand that when we talk about, when we talk about bonds. Can you talk about the garage again, the one that we put money up, but you said we were holding it, and we'll get that money back? Can you talk about that?
Sure. So in March of '23, when we, when 3CDC acquired the Wex parking garage, the city and the county came to support that acquisition by providing, by each providing a $275,000 annual appropriation that was really used to support a loan from the state of Ohio, a $7 million loan. And so that annual appropriation from both governments is really just sitting in kind of a secured account on either side. We've been working with the state to get approval for, first, for the appropriation to stop, and then, second, for the, there's $825,000 now in the county's account, but for that money to then be released and issued back to the county.
And then there was a, the project was less or came in under, and that leaves, on the county's side, $8 million? Is that true? Or Mr. Ludo, I don't know which one, but you explain that to the people.
Well, I think the total savings, I think, are still being refined as we get towards the end of the project, but yeah, I think the, overall, the efficiencies brought in by the project will result in some savings ultimately. So as we get those further defined, we'll come back to the board and provide some further information on that.
And then the question I had brought up was the payback for the hotel. The hotel motel tax from that particular hotel, the 700 rooms, that fund, those, the tax from that will go in to pay back the debt on the hotel. My question was, if you have, say, I throw out there a music festival, for example, when every downtown hotel is booked, we don't increase the amount of people, so now, say you take 700 out of that, and you put it toward this hotel, those dollars would only go to pay for this hotel. It doesn't necess, then, does that affect our overall tot? Because we factored that in for some other waterfall obligations, and what I'm trying to make sure is that it's just not a swapping of rooms, it's that, you know, I'm not staying at, I'm not going to stay at Marriott Courtyard now, I'm going to stay at the new Marriott. But the new Marriott, money goes to pay that debt, we don't bring in additional money, so it kind of brings down the overall tot. So that was what I was, just wanted us to look at, and not just that event, I'm saying, even if, you know, we had the Bengals-Steelers game was in town, and all the hotels were booked, Brandy Monica concert, people had come in from other cities. I think she's not going to Louisville, I don't think so. Louisville was coming here, but if they stay at that hotel, how does it affect the, you know, because we get so many home games for Bengals, we get so many home games for Reds, the Pirates are in town for a series, now they're not staying at, you know, one of the other hotels, now they're at the Hampton Inn downtown. They said, I want to be at the new one. And so then that one goes into a fund, but over here, we lose out on the other things that we're doing. So how do we, do we factor that in, or are we going to factor it in? Either one of you, I don't know.
Okay. So I guess two points from my perspective. The first one being, when we closed on the financing for the large convention center and the big tot, or the big waterfall, as we were kind of discussing it yesterday, we never, in that financing structure, never contemplated construction of the new hotel, because we always knew that the tot generated at the new hotel would be kept within that hotel. And so from that perspective, the large waterfall never anticipated another 700 rooms, it never, it's not losing out on that revenue. To your other point about, are people going to stay here and not at one of the more general tot hotels, I think that, based on studies that we had done with our third-party consultant HVS, when the new hotel is finished, we'll have about 4,500 rooms in downtown Cincinnati, which is comparable to where we are at prior to the Millennium being demolished. And so from my point of view, we're kind of right-sizing the market back to what Cincinnati can support, and so my gut is that when we have these large, large music festival or a sell-out game with the Steelers, that all of the hotel rooms will just be booked, and I think that's what we have been seeing when Detroit was here, when Pittsburgh was here last week, that all the rooms in downtown were, were full, and I think adding to it will only allow more people to stay downtown.
I just want to do a little more study on that part, because, you know, I just want to make sure we're not, they'll say, well, we got a new hotel, and, you know, we didn't increase the size of people coming. We had the Steelers game, and they sold out everything, that's without the 700 rooms. So did we think we're going to get more people, you know, because we got the new hotel, or more people are going to say, I want to, you know, people want to stay at the new stuff? So I just think, I know yesterday when I brought it up, you all said you want to go back and just double-check, had we looked at that, and then if so, just how to properly plan for it, is what I'm.
Yeah, and Commissioner, we'll continue to, it's a good question, we'll continue to take a look at it. I think, as Katie said, I think it, you know, a lot of it factors into the compression that's created in the broader hotel market by the development of the new hotel, and the thought behind it is that it will not result in an erosion of the broader market, but actually help support some of the rest of the market as well, both from an occupancy perspective and a rate perspective as well, both of which go into determining how much revenue we're pulling in for the occupancy tax. So we'll go back and look at all the assumptions, but I think Katie's assessment is correct. I don't think we feel that it'll have a negative impact at this point, but it's something to keep an eye on, because, you know, certainly the purpose is not to cannibalize the broader market, which I think is what your point was.
Yeah, and then my last thing, that, I guess, two things that I want to say. When you look at the PowerPoint, it has a lot about the city of Cincinnati, make sure they get their money back, and this helps the city of Cincinnati, and we're, we're happy for the city of Cincinnati. But I want to be very clear that we represent the whole county, and we've got hotels that are not downtown, and those hotels also want to make sure that we're not knocking them out, out the box. I'm just going to be real clear with that. It's great to say, we've got a billion dollars down there, but if I'm in somewhere else, if I'm out in Sharonville, I want to know, we'll, you know, we did do the convention center out there, and we've got a hotel out there, but I do know, when we have some of those larger events, they were going out to those areas as well, and they were benefiting from different things. So when we look at it, I just want to make sure we're looking at it holistically. Blue Ash, they want to book rooms, so we want to make sure that it's something that bleeds over to their areas, and they can benefit as well, and not to the fact that, you know, that we're only concerned with Cincinnati. And I'm a Cincinnatian, born and raised and everything, but the reality is, I'm also a Hamilton County, and I'm in this county, and one of the complaints I've been hearing as I was running and going door-to-door and talking to people is that they're just sick of everything coming down here, billions and billions, and they're taxpayers, they'll be on the hook no matter what, because we're paying this, you know, if they don't, they got to contribute into the tot as well, and they contribute sales tax and those kind of things. So just looking at these things, not in silos, is where I'm trying to go, and how can we have something that helps, I'm not going to say region, because they'll say that's in Kentucky, but helps the whole county as we are looking at, because our money is getting short, our bonding capacity eventually is going to get short, we're putting taxpayers on the hook, sometimes beyond our years, that'll be around, and I just want to make sure that those areas, we had some issues initially, and I think that we got them resolved, but the mayor out in the Springdale area, and the mayor out at Sharonville, they were not happy, and we had to go back. So I just want to make sure, when we're looking at the room tot, if you will, just making sure that we factor in those things as well, and we may have already got any, but I'd like to see it, that would help, you know, with their hotels out in those areas.
Yeah, and we can, and certainly, even as this, as we continue to get empirical data on this and see how occupancies are, occupancy rates are working throughout the entire county, how rate is progressing through the entire county, we'll keep the, certainly keep the board up to date on that. I know we provide a quarterly update to the board on occupancy tax rates, occupancy levels, et cetera, throughout the county. We'll continue to do that. I will say that, to your point, Commissioner, I think one of the real success stories of this particular effort is that you're right, you can't look at these things in a silo. This is a county-wide convention and tourism industry, it's not something that stops just at the urban core, and you're correct. When we first started into this initiative five years ago or so, we had folks in the, in the suburban communities asking, what is in it for us? You know, as we invest in the urban core, how is that going to help us? In fact, we had several state legislators who wanted to make sure, and because we were looking at a 1% increase in the occupancy tax to help fund this, and occupant, an increase that would also impact those suburban hotels as well, and we had state legislators say, I'm not going to do this until I hear from these suburban communities that they feel that this is a good thing for them. So we had a lot of meetings, I mean, a lot of meetings with those suburban communities to make sure that, at the end of the day, they felt that, that not only was this good for downtown, but this was going to be good for their communities as well, and I think that's a real positive story out of this. Now we got to keep monitoring and make sure that it turns out that way, right? I mean, it's one thing to project, it's another thing to continue to monitor, make sure that everyone has made whole to the degree that they thought they were going to be, and we'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to make sure the board is updated on it continually as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I do appreciate that, thinking long-term, in terms of making sure that the product does not go down, the hotel product, I think that was huge to have in here, and so I do want to commend you on that part, but I just wanted to, those are the things I know I brought up in our meeting. I will say, I, I'm, the property, I guess, with the hotel, would they own the land as well as the air rights on that property, or would the port still own some?
So Portman will own the real estate.
Yes, okay. And then I'm glad that you put in here, if they sell it, that's still, I guess, is tied, hopefully is tied to the deed, so whoever the new person is, they have to adhere to the agreement that, that you have there. So I did ask that question, and I hope that that is airtight as well, because usually they sell after maybe 10 years or 15 years, they sell to the next, get their money out, and then they sell it.
Yeah.
And Portman was here, and I think I asked him that question as well. Early on, I had asked him that question, and they answered that. The other thing I just want to say, and I know I'm not, I'm in the minority, I just not, you know, for me, I'm just not happy about the 50 million-plus-dollar investment in terms of getting the Millennium out of there, and what we get in return is a entertainment space that's free and doesn't make any money. I just, I just want to be on record that I don't think that's the best return on investment. I know that that's what you guys do at 3CDC, you'll come in with the liquor license, you'll come in with advertisers and all of that, but at the end of the day, from a business perspective, if I was a private business to invest 50 million, and I come back and all I got is nothing, I got free space, and we've got it down the street at Fountain Square, we've got it at Washington Park, I just, I don't agree that that was the best use with the type of investment that had to be made, but, you know, I was outnumbered on that. And then lastly, we found out in the last budget, which is news to me, and I had asked about it, that there is families who are tied to the deed to that property, that was a very smart family who put that together, and we pay on that annually. Mr. Ludo, can you talk about that? That's the Millennium site, they have deed to the land, and we have to pay them to their family trusts every, I think, year, because they own the deed or something, or tied to the deed.
Yeah, in the acquisition of all the Millennium parcels, there were a couple of parcels where there's, where there are some, I don't know, whether they're LLCs or families that have ground leases on some of those parcels that we continue to pay rent to. So we're talking about that now in terms of what's the best way to go about dealing with those, whether we continue to, to pay the rent, whether we look at some other alternative with, with those ground leases, but that's something that's still under consideration. But yes, that's the case.
That was news to me. That's why I asked who's on, on the land on the, the new property that we have. We won't be running into those type of problems moving forward. But we do still owe money, because they have a deed, in the deed, that's why we say, get the deed. That family, whoever did that, they're smart, because they left something behind for their family. From my perspective, we don't like it, because we got to pay every year in our budget to these families or trusts or LLCs, like you said, that, but we're trying to get out of that, and that is on the property that has the entertainment complex, so we're trying to get out of that now, right?
Just to clarify, Commissioner, the land leases or the ground leases are on the, not on the Plaza portion, it's just north of Sixth Street, there's like a little fenced-in area.
So, or, so then how did we get tied up if it's not on the Millennium site?
The Millennium, if you recall, had a northern, like, it had a small portion north of Sixth Street that was part of the, like, the full Millennium site, so it was part of that transaction.
So it is, but what's on that site now?
Just grass and, it's, it's not part of the, it's not part of Elm Street Plaza.
Okay, so now we just got green space, but we owe money on it. It was news to me when they came up and said, we got to vote on, given, and they put the word Millennium site in the budget, that's why I called it the Millennium. That's what we voted on, said Millennium site. But you're saying we're trying to work out where we won't have this ongoing cost, because this is an importunity, right?
We've factored it into the model originally on it, the paying, payment of the ground leases, but we'll look at, as we always do, just what is the, the most financially practical way to, to manage that, whether it's to keep the ground leases, whether it's to look at another alternative with, with those leases, we'll look at all of those.
And then we'll know those going, as, as we're completing the project, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you both for being here, really appreciate the update.
Can I ask a question, Madam President? What are our next steps as it relates to this? What's the next steps for the board?
So next steps are a resolution being presented on the October 30th agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I've got one question. What about the city? I'd ask, now, the city, they're really the ones in charge of this, and you indicated to me that the city didn't, might not move until November. And you indicated to me that the city didn't, might not move until November, so we would be first before the city?
Yes, we don't have a firm date from the city yet. I think Holly Jeff will probably know at the end of this week if that's gonna happen prior to Commissioners' meeting on October 30th, or if that will happen after City Council and mayoral election.
Yeah, I, my concern was, when you look at what these resolutions do that you want us to pass, it's a lot about the city. And the city is kind of the first in, and I don't know why they, we would be first in before them. So that was my, I did bring that up in our meeting. I know you said they wanted to wait till after the election. And of course, that made me nervous. But most of this stuff is a lot dealing with, in, in, in the, in the language, it's the city this, the city that, the city will be refunded, the city will do this, the city will do that. So I didn't know about us, I, I brought it up about us potentially because it's no time, if we waited to do right after the city, it wouldn't, you know, they do it on a Wednesday, we do it on a Thursday, it wouldn't stop the project. But I did want to say, I did bring that up. That was something that I thought was interesting.
Yeah, and I think a lot in the, in the agreement where the city might have a little bit more ink than the county relates to the fact that they did provide the, the additional loan. Aside from that, that we both have the tot waiver in there, the city is moving some more cash over to, to the projects. There are a few things that they're doing that, that the county is not, but I understand the point.
No, 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 I understand, I'm not against the city being in it. I'm just saying, if the city is driving it, it's a lot of language in there about the city. And I'm not saying it shouldn't be, I'm just saying I think it would be strange that if it's the city, basically, then, you know, I didn't see why we wouldn't do a thing at the same time, is what I'm saying.
And just to clarify and remind the Commissioners, that City Council did vote in June to approve the $40 million bond issuance and issuing of the $50 million loan. So that portion of the city approval has already occurred. We were just reminding the body that, that that was part of, a big part of the financing plan. So they would be voting on the remainder of the development agreement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks again. Okay, our next item is the Architect, Engineer, and Construction Management Consultant Agreements for Paycor Stadium. And I know we've got a number of folks here, Dwayne Herring is here, Phil Beck is here. So please lead us into this conversation.
All right, you want to tee that up? Thank you, Kristy. Good morning Commissioners, Phil Beck, Banks Project Executive. And as you say, Commissioner Greathouse, I'm joined by Dwayne Herring, the Bengals Director of Stadium and Event Operations. So I'm glad he's here with me this morning. So what I want to talk about is, we start with the lease, that was the big milestone, and move into the Request for Qualification Timeline, and then move into the Selection Recommendation for both Architecture Engineering as well as Construction Management for the Paycor Stadium renovations. So Dwayne has a, has a lot of experience with these projects and was very involved with the lease. But this is kind of the starting point as of August 1. This is the exhibit in our lease, lists out the projects. Do you have some, the comment on this?
Go ahead. Sure. Thanks, Phil, and thanks everyone for having us this morning. We're excited to be at this stage. We are going through a necessary but important step, which is to identify some key firms to help lead us with some of our key renovations at Paycor Stadium. The thing I want to share today is, is a thank you for the collaboration. We've had some incredibly productive meetings from folks from all sides at the table. And what I have appreciated is that everyone is looking at this through the lens of, let's get the very best outcome we possibly can for the, for what the lease has dictated, the taxpayer dollars that are going into this stadium and getting the best outcome for people who are gonna come to the stadium and use the facility. The projects that you see listed here were ones that were debated heavily and investigated thoroughly during the negotiation process. And what you're gonna find is that these projects, in many ways, will reflect renovations and improvements to the stadium that will impact almost all of the fans who would come to the stadium. Things like vertical transportation and bathrooms, wayfinding and stadium concourse beautification, video boards, seat replacements, things that the stadium needs to continue to maintain its status as a first-class venue in the NFL. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Phil to walk you through the rest of the process.
Thank you, Dwayne. So as far as our Request for Qualification Timeline, we started with August 1, that was the big day. And for the next few weeks, we had a team working diligently to assemble the Request for Qualification documents that were then publicly advertised, both the Enquirer and the Business Courier, as well as the Court Index, to get it as widely disseminated as possible. I would like to do some shout-outs, if I could, to some of my county colleagues, Robert Bell, Joe Williams with Purchasing, Joe Paul with Stadium, and Roger Friedman on the legal side. Everyone had input into these requests for qualifications. So they were then advertised mid-September, and we received four Architecture Engineering responses on October 6 and four Construction Management responses, also October 6. There was a selection committee that was assembled comprised of both Bengals and Hamilton County. From the county side, it was heavy on facility and infrastructure. So Joe Paul and Jim Morgan with the stadium, as well as Burt Watts and myself. And on the Bengal side, Dwayne Herring sat on the board, Steve Johnson, John Pope, and Caroline Blackburn. It was quite a bit of, of time spent hashing through these eight responses and meetings with discussions. We shortlisted down to two Architecture Engineering firms and two Construction Management firms, which we then held interviews with. And the committee made selections and recommendations from that process. The recommendations for Architecture Engineering is KZF Design, and they have several subs that were very carefully selected. And the recommendation for Construction Management is Messer Construction, who also has two subs that were part of their team. And these teams represent considerable experience, not only for the county, specifically for the banks, and specifically for Paycor Stadium. So that is the selection recommendation, and this will come before you for consideration on Thursday, this coming Thursday. So it's two resolutions, one for Architecture Engineering, one for Construction Management.
Thank you very much. I must say that in my nine years, I guess I've been here, I've never had a presentation like this, where we have been very open with the process that we're undergoing by way of renovations and improvements to the county's asset, which is the stadium where the team plays. And so I think that this is a new day, and I appreciate that. Obviously, this is done in partnership. And the results, as I look at some of the subs that are underneath the primary award winners, right, through the, through the process, look very different than, I think, what we've seen in the past. And so this board, on many things, and my colleagues have been very outspoken about breaking up contracts, making sure some firms that we've not used in the past have an opportunity to participate in, in a project that's funded with county taxpayer dollars. And so I see evidence of that here on this sheet. And I'm grateful that the effort was made to make sure that that priority was front and center when we went out for, you know, these bids. So I appreciate you bringing this to us. I hope there's more to come by way of helping us better understand what the process looks like, who's getting the awards, so that we can respond to the community as these issues come up. Because we often hear about the stadium and what's going on with the stadium. The taxpayers are very keyed in on this investment. And so it's really helpful for us to know and for the public to know that we are doing things differently here, doing them in partnership and opening up the process in a way that we have not in the past. So very grateful for the presentation. Commissioner Samara Dumas.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation and also your information. And not to be redundant, what was just said, you can look at this list and see that we are different and we are purposely different. I have one question. You said as you disseminated the RFQ, you sent it to the Enquirer and the Business Courier, correct?
And the Court Index, yes.
The Court Index. And I was just wondering, Robert Bell, he has a bold list. And so can he also disseminate through his bold list that there's a RFQ as it relates to this? He's looking at me like. It's okay, yeah.
Come on up.
Because we often talk about the Cincinnati Herald, and did they get contacted? So they did not, and so that's why I asked.
Well, well, I did, well, not, not for the, the A and E firm solicitation itself and, and not for the construction management, because the people on my bold list are not big enough to do these.
Okay.
Most of my, most of what I've been doing for the last few years is really pushing the subcontractor opportunities. And that's really making a difference. So I did let a lot of subcontractors know that this was, that when it came out, that this was out, that they should come to the, you know, to approach the primes to get work as well. And so I did use the bold list.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Yes, thank you very much. And then to piggyback on that, I, I agree, our, our board has been very intentional to make sure everyone can participate because everyone has to pay taxes. They're equal on tax day and unequal every other day. And so I want to commend Mr. Bell because I know that he also goes beyond and, and he had some folks come in and present to us earlier this year that they were happy in terms of being able to participate. I can tell you, from my own experience, I was riding down by the stadium, just on a regular day, I'm always in that area, and a gentleman came up and introduced himself and said, hey, you know, how could we participate with the county? How can we be a part of doing something on the stadium? I said, it's perfect timing, you need to call Robert Bell. I gave him Robert Bell's number, and of course, I didn't hear from him anymore. Then all of a sudden, I saw him post on Facebook that his company got a contract. And he would not have known to even apply, you know, but because Mr. Bell, when I connected him, and he was a part of, some part of our last project where we did some demolition and some other things. But he was very proud of that. So I'm just glad that our board, we have an infrastructure set up where people can get plugged in. The other thing that I wanted to say, I was happy to see on here that all seats will be redone. I was concerned. Of course, we love club levels and those kind of things. And I understand from Bengals' business perspective, that's the areas where they pay the most and those kind of things. And then, of course, season ticket holders, but there are some season ticket holders that are up higher. And, because I've got folks that do have season tickets and they're up a little bit higher. They like to come down low, but there's nothing opening up. But it's good to know because we heard, at least I had heard complaints about, what about going up higher? And so it's good to know that all the seats will be redone, so everybody will have a chance to experience. The thing that I do want to put on the table is accessibility. And I would like to make sure that we have collaboration. Sometimes it's collaboration, the Bengals' ownership, you all might have an idea. You want us to collaborate. There are times that we, as a county, will have an idea, and we'd like to see the same level of collaboration. We have issues about accessibility. I think that every, we're in 2025, every entrance, every part of the stadium, since we're doing all this redo, should be accessible. We've had issues and currently even, you know, possibly getting sued. I would like to make sure all entrances, all bathrooms, all, everybody can enjoy the experience. When you think about disabilities, there's more people, we got Joe Burrow right now. He did, he, he would fall under disability temporarily because he's got the, he's got the surgery. There's people that got knee replacements, hip replacements, and then you have people who are permanently in wheelchairs. I've been to games where you gotta find your place to park, and then I saw all these people. I mean, I saw an 85-year-old man and shaking on a cane. And they had to go all the way around. I mean, you got to go to this entrance. All entrances should be able to accommodate everybody, people with disabilities. So I want to make sure that as we are redoing, that that is front and center. It's not, oh, the disability is down, down and around the corner, that's your entrance. All workers should be sensitive and trained to help people with disabilities. Bathroom's everything. So I just would hope in this plan that we could be announcing, here's what we got now, new, that's a stadium for everybody. Whether you're on a cane, whether you're on a walker, whether you're on crutches, whether you got new hips, new knees, we can get you in there. We want to be, we, we want to go from last place in that into first place. So we need the cooperation on that. That's very important. That what I saw, I didn't like, what I heard, I didn't like. So I think that's the area that we can work together, collaborate, and it's a win for everyone. The other thing that I wanted to also highlight is that we're doing good on the construction side. It seems like we're, this is a good first step, what we're doing with inclusion and, and let me just say, these are qualified firms that happen to be minority-owned, but they're qualified. We'd like to see the same thing on contracts inside the stadium. That's another thing I heard. I see other stadiums, in fact, I'm getting ready to go to a stadium in, in, in Vegas, they're hosting the HBCU Classic at the Allegiant Stadium. And, but some of the things I'm hearing that they're doing with minority businesses inside, whether it's concessions and other things, you know what's inside. I don't know all the things that happen inside, but I do know with concessions, Great American Ballpark started out doing something good in their contract. I don't know if it continued, but they were able to have some minority concessionaires to participate, small businesses that's local that can be inside. Anything we can do for that. Originally, I had the idea of us having an area that we could have, and you could have a lottery, and the small business can win a lottery, and you can go in and we would build it out so you don't have to worry about the other stuff. But I hope that we can get to that, using this as the beginning of, on the other side of contracts as well. So I just wanted to say that while you all are here. And then, I, again, I just wanted to, I like the fact that these repairs is the entire, it hits all levels, no matter what ticket you have, it hits every level. What's the timeline? You have like the year, but there's a thing called a music festival. And what I don't want is usually when we bring a music festival, and I want more concerts, obviously, not just the music festival. We always say, excuse the dust, and they are inconvenient. One time, we had a problem with the suites, with the, the, the TVs in the suites. And these people were paying a lot of money to be in there. But we were able to come together, at the end, I know Jeff was on vacation. I said, Jeff, we gotta get this done, because people were going crazy. So are we making sure that by that time, whatever, how we phasing it in, that there won't be inconvenience, escalators not working, elevators not going, you know, walk all around trying to get in the building? Have we worked around that schedule?
Yes, ma'am. We look exhaustively at the list of projects, prioritize those projects by year, balance out the budget so that we are, we're equalizing particularly labor force, so we're not going too heavy and we can't find the people to do the work. too heavy and we can't find the people to do the work. So we're looking at that across the next several years. But yes, we definitely highlight the primary events at Paycor Stadium, Music Festival, 10 football games, and any other big events that comes up that Dwayne is responsible for. So yes, we have to work around that. And both these two consultants, KZF Design and Messer Construction, are both chomping at the bit to figure out ways to even continue some elements of this work through the season, the football season, so that we're not losing all that time. So, you know, restrooms are a good example. We're renovating all the restrooms in the facility. So you can do some work, get it cleaned up, open it, use it, and then after that event, go back in and finish the next thing. So yes, if that answers your question, we are thinking strategically how we can get the work done and not lose time.
Yeah. No, I think it's good. Get the work done, don't lose time. But I want to make sure when we're, when the game, we got the game now, people say, I can't even get to the bathroom. Two bathrooms are down, only two working. Or if we have a concert and they say, oh, excuse the dust, or like we did, you know, I voted on something, but I didn't know it was taking TVs out. And I did ask a bunch of times though, before, but we don't want that where we have to inconvenience the folks that are coming down there. And the other thing I want to look at is will any street closings and will this impact in any way the Cincinnati Black Music Walker Fame? Because there's some construction, I know, going on with the parks people. But will that, will this, anything we're doing have to have any type of shutting down of anything outside of, inside, outside of being inside the actual facility?
Yeah. As Commissioner, as I'm standing here today, not that I can think of or even imagine, the work is primarily on the west side of Elm Street, on the property itself for the stadium. It could, we could use some potential laydown areas like Hilltop. You know, we need that for parking on events, but in between events, we might use that for temporary, you know, bring a truck in, unload it, and then move it into the stadium. So it could be like staging. So we're looking at all those options. Back before, I used the restrooms as an example because we actually need every restroom in that facility to be usable by code. So there's no workaround. Yeah, they all have to work for all the events and we want them to look good. We don't want pardon our dust signs all over the place. So, yeah.
Okay. That's great. And then my last thing, Dwayne, I will say it and say it again till we can get it right. One of the collaborations that we got to work on is putting this fence thing in front of the Black Music Walker Fame as though it's closed. And I know we have game days, but I done seen it, you didn't have a game till Sunday, and I seen it up on Monday. Then after the game, I saw it on Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday. I'm scared to go down there today because it might still be down there. This is one of the easiest collaborations we can have between you and Joe. Let's get it done. And please, let's get something in writing so everybody knows that we're open seven days a week, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We're free, it's an open process. I understand we definitely want to have safety, but we have our tailgating over on the Smale Park side by Hilltop, and we don't have this up at all. And they're over there having a great time. Bingo Gym does a fantastic job, but you know, they got food, they got drinks and everything. We don't have any food, don't have any drinks, but we can't be, I had a lady come in and say, I was going to go down there, but they got the thing up, it's closed down. So can we please get this together? I know y'all working on it, but that's something I think we can get done in 24 hours, I would hope.
Agreed.
So other than that, thank you very much and thanks for presenting this.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
Very briefly, just to tack on, because it was raised, the issue of accessibility. I do know that this board has created an accessibility advisory committee. We've had initial conversations. Joe, Paul, Anson have reached out to Dwayne and Steve Johnson to integrate that committee at some level with the planning stages of this renovation to be a nice kickoff project for that group. I just wanted to really thank Dwayne and Steve for their willingness to entertain that on behalf of the board. So just wanted to make sure the board knew and was aware of that dynamic here.
Yeah, I think we've talked about that in the past. And it, as I say, it's just a different look for us. It's about accessibility, it's about opening up the process, it's about transparency for the taxpayers. So it's just very good to have, and I hope we continue to have these presentations as we go, because it's very, very helpful. So, thank you. Thanks for being here. Okay. Our last item is the impacts of House Bill 96. And Jeff, you're going to give us a presentation.
I am going to kick it off. I'm going to turn it over here in a moment to Enrique Martin with our Budget Office. So, let's see, Kristi, over to, just to kick it off, so as you indicated, Commissioner, in September this year, the state approved legislation that provides counties with certain alternatives to provide tax relief, property tax relief specifically to residents in the state of Ohio. This has been in the news a little bit over the past several months, especially as the subject of property taxes has remained a high concern with residents. The options that the state gave through what is known as House Bill 96 primarily related to the ability for counties to piggyback or add on to currently existing property tax relief programs. So right now, there are programs in the state, and the board is aware of this, so forgive me, but for folks who may be watching at home, there's something called the homestead exemption. There is something called the owner occupancy credit, fancy words for things that Enrique will explain here just in a moment. But those currently show up as credits or exemptions on someone's property tax bill to allow you to pay less than you otherwise would have been paying. Not included in those options under House Bill 96 would be something like the inside millage rollback, which is something that, that counties always maintain as a, as a, an alternative. But there is on your property tax bill, something called the inside millage. This is unvoted millage. There's 10 mills that are applied throughout all the taxing jurisdictions in the county. Each jurisdiction has the ability to modulate that on an annual basis if they so desire. So we're going to discuss those three items today in terms of how House Bill 96 relates to both the homestead exemption, the owner occupancy credit, and then we're also going to talk a little bit about inside millage as well, just because it's something that you're seeing a lot of news about in the state currently. I did provide the board with a report on this last week. Today, so today, we're just going to walk through some of the options the board has, the timeline related to those in a little bit more detail. And as I indicated at the beginning, I've asked Enrique, who I think most of you know, but is in our Budget Office, Enrique Martin, he came to us. Enrique, how long have you been with Hamilton County now?
Just over a year now.
Just over a year. It came from Claremont.
That's right.
County, I believe, in the auditor's office.
Auditor's office.
In the auditor's office, has a lot of skill and knowledge as it relates to these types of programs. So I've asked Enrique to walk through a description of some of these programs, and then I'll walk the board through some things on financial impact, and we'll wrap up and ask if there's any questions. So Enrique, I've got the clicker, you just told me one to click.
Yep. Like Jeff said, I'm just going to be describing a little bit of the concurrent state programs that this piggyback exception is based off of. If you could go to the next slide, Jeff. So the first program they have is the homestead exemption. This is a reduction to taxable value for certain criteria of taxpayers. The standard reduction is for senior citizens, 65 and older, as well as disabled citizens, both with a household income under $40,000. Like I said, this exemption would reduce the taxable value for these taxpayers by $28,000 so that the assessment, the value that can be assessed is decreased, therefore taking away the burden on those homeowners. On top of this standard reduction, there's an enhanced one for disabled veterans and any widows, first responder killed in action. This exemption does not have an income limit, so as long as you follow that criteria, you can apply. And the taxable value reduction is $56,000, so double the standard reduction if you meet that criteria. These figures I'm quoting are from the current tax year. There is an inflationary model, so every year it increases how much reduction to accommodate for the inflation of property values. There is a timeline for the levies and the criteria of people who can apply. Those who qualify before tax year 2014 are not subject to the income test, just the age and disability or veteran status. As of right now, there's 33,700 parcels that apply, but that can vary year to year. If you want to go to the next line. So the next relief program is the owner occupancy credit. This is any homeowner who resides in their main residence. They get a 2.5% reduction on certain property taxes, voted property taxes. And this credit is limited to just one residence per taxpayer, so their main residence. This would only apply for levies originally passed prior to the 13 fall election. So anything in that November, any levies passed in the 2013 fall election would qualify for that reduction. Renewed levies from that period still qualify. So if a levy passed prior to fall of 13, but was renewed in 17 or in '21, they still, those levies still qualify. That would encapsulate all Hamilton County levies, so all of us are in that description of 2013 or earlier. And I believe it's 192,000 parcels and some change, 192,500 that currently receive that. The criteria there is a lot more broader. So yeah, so those would be the two concurrent state relief programs for property tax. These are reimbursed by the state. So originally, we missed out on the revenue, but on the backend, we were reimbursed by the state, all the levies. And then I'll move on to defining inside millage for our discussion. Like Jeff said, we collect 2.26 mills as a portion of that 10-mill provision that each tax district can collect nonvoted. It currently generates $63 million for the general fund, around 16% of the general fund budget. This inside millage portion is, any reduction to that is separate to House Bill 96. The provisions, the authority that ORC gives the board to reduce that is outside of the bill, it's already in ORC. The only stipulation there is that the county has to collect more sales tax than property tax, and they can't, they have to collect enough to meet the current debt obligations for inside millage. And that pretty much wraps it up.
Thanks, Enrique. Appreciate that. And I'm going to walk through some fiscal impacts here. So as Enrique said, House Bill 96 provide, provided the board with options. However, it should be noted that with each of these programs, I think Enrique hit on this, currently, the state reimburses counties and taxing jurisdictions for the revenue reductions associated with them. So in other words, any revenue lost due to the current homestead or owner occupancy credit is currently reimbursed by the state. That would not be the case under the piggyback options under House Bill 96. So when the state passed House Bill 96, they basically said, counties, you can do this, you can provide additional property tax relief through a doubling or a piggybacking of the homestead or owner occupancy credit, but we are not going to reimburse you for that. That at least is what came through House Bill 96. So it would be a revenue reduction to each of the taxing districts. So for the county general fund, those impacts are detailed here, and this is all in the report that the board received. This, for the homestead exemption, the county would forego an additional $654,000. For the owner occupancy credit, $946,000. There are also other impacts. I want, this is something that I don't think, know that the, has been made real clear in a lot of the past reporting on this elsewhere in the state, but that the impact also accrues to the voted levies and also to other taxing jurisdictions. So our assessment of that, so in Hamilton County, the voted levies, this would be things like children's services, senior services, mental health, developmental disability services. The impact to those voted levies would be about 5.6 million, again, all in your report, Commissioners. And then all the other taxing jurisdictions that currently see a reduction and a reimbursement from the current homestead and owner occupancy credit programs. And there's roughly 80 of those, and this would include school districts, townships, municipalities, special purpose entities, et cetera, roughly 34 million from those entities. So in terms of the tax benefit to property owners, so the question would be how much, if the board did this, how much will a property owner benefit? So we did run some high-level numbers, and as the board knows from calculations that we, and we do a lot of calculations for millage on a lot of different things, whether we're looking at property tax rebates in the fall, whether we're sizing levies and we're doing millage runs and things of that nature. The board knows that it's very difficult to pinpoint an exact amount that someone is going to benefit, because it is going to vary most of the time by the taxing, the taxing district that you're in and the various things that apply in that district. But with that as a qualifier, we did run some high-level numbers related to understand the relative tax benefit of these programs to a hypothetical home. And again, the, so the owner occupancy credit applies essentially to all owner occupied homes, the homestead exemption only to those that are eligible. And as you can see here, this is a hypothetical $160,000 home with a current total tax bill of around $2,851. The benefit to the piggyback would be an annual benefit increase of approximately $676. The owner occupancy piggyback benefit and annual increased benefit of around $46. And again, the qualifier that this may vary, this will vary depending upon the specific taxing jurisdiction. From an inside millage perspective, it's a little bit different. So if, for example, Enrique went through a little bit earlier, the total amount that is collected from an inside millage perspective. So without anything really to go by, we just kind of benchmarked this. If the board were to say, reduce inside millage by 25%, that's roughly $16 million, that would apply differently than homestead or owner occupancy credit in that it will apply to every entity that is taxed through real estate in the county, so commercial, industrial, residential, et cetera. So at that level, 16 million, that would be roughly $19 of benefit per $100,000 of value. So just to give you a little bit of an understanding, the benefit for the inside millage is a little bit more diluted because it does apply to all taxed entities. And as the board is aware that, you know, if we're, as we're talking about these options, that those total, totals are not, certainly not for inside millage and not for any of these House Bill 96 items, they're not reimbursed from the state. So those reductions would either come, or those alternative programs would be funded either from the general fund reserve or absorbed through additional reductions in the general fund operating budget. So Commissioners, in terms of process, if the board desired to proceed, House Bill 96 did set a timeline for proceeding, and they were specific about, this is something that can be done annually, but they were specific as it related to 2025, saying that the board, the counties could act between September 30th and October 31st to authorize exemptions for tax year 2025, which is fiscal year 2026. That same timeline, maybe with a little bit of a flexibility, also would apply to the inside millage because while, again, House Bill 96 didn't reference inside millage, I think this, these timelines are, were probably set, understanding the calendars of county budget commissions. budget commissions and when they need to meet, when they need to certify values, appraised values, et cetera. So I would say a consideration of inside millage to the degree the board were going to do that, you're still talking about the same timeline. So commissioners, I'm happy to opine more on this, but I, I wanted to just give you the, the general straight skinny here before we moved into any questions. Happy to answer questions as they, as they, as they come, and happy to opine more on this if there are specific questions.
Thank you, Jeff. I, I think I will, I, I know Anson is here, and he is keeping track of what's going on at the state level. Anson, could you just give us a quick status report on the bills that are rolling through the legislature related to this topic?
All right. Thank you, commissioners, for the viewers at home. My name's Anson Turley, I'm the deputy assistant administrator. And one of the things that I get to do is to speak with our state lobbyists about the, the current things that are going on at the state. The HB, HB 96, that Governor Mike DeWine signed, it had three items that dealt, that he vetoed, that dealt with tax, property tax. One was item 55, what dealt with county budget commissions, it would have expanded their authority to adjust voted levy millage. Item 65, which dealt with the 20 mil floor calculation, which also deals with school districts, and also item 66. So far, the House has only overrode item 66, and that eliminated the ability of, for replacement levies, for schools to put replacement levies on the ballot. So the Senate has not acted on any of these, so the vetoes, they still stand until they are acted upon by the General Assembly. Currently also, we have going through the House, a couple of bills. One is House Bill 186, which caps unvoted property tax growth for schools to inflation. This was introduced in March 19th, 2025, and it's been referred to House Ways and Means. And I'd also like to ask the commission, I can get updated where these actually lie in the process after this, this meeting, and I can report that back to you. There's also a House Bill 156. It creates a property tax freeze for seniors and lower income homeowners. And this would be seniors and those who have low to moderate income homes, and this was also introduced in March of 19, 2025. And then House Bill 154 requires school district approval for new property tax abatements. And then, we all know House Bill 335, that was the, the bill that was going to eliminate inside millage totally. That right now is on pause. But all of these are kind of being done in conjunction with the recommendations that the governor put together, the Property Tax Review Commission. And you know that, President, because you were on it. And they're trying, the state knows that this is an issue. And one of the things that's driving this issue is the fact that there is a group that is trying to put a referendum on the ballot that would eliminate all property taxes. Now, it's interesting to note that no state in the union has done that, and to do that would be devastating to public safety and all of the things like education that are funded by property tax. But currently, none of the vetoes, only one veto, has been passed in the House, or veto override, and that's for item 66. And then the, the bills that I mentioned there that deal with replacement levies, with unvoted property tax growth for schools, that's HB 186, and then also HB 129, those deal with the 20 mil floor.
Okay, thank you. Standby for any questions.
I'll try my best.
So thank you for the report, Jeff. Thanks Enrique for the information related to this. One thing, just right off the bat, the, the analysis that you did for the impact to the property owner, that I would love to see an analysis, not for $160,000 home, but for $100,000 home, because we generally talk about $100,000 homes, that might not be reasonable anymore. But if I could see that, that's kind of the, the level we usually talk about, so it's really hard to compare apples to apples when I've got 160 impact and we don't have the $100,000 impact. So just right off the bat, I just want to note that, because it's, again, hard to put this all in context without that.
Yeah, Commissioner, we can, we can certainly do that. I think the reason, and we can provide an analysis at, at any level that, that you want, we can certainly do for 100,000. I think we, we had done this just because, especially given the fact that we were talking about some very specific exemptions that are on the actual duplicate, that we wanted to provide essentially what would be more of a routine example of.
Yeah, I, I get it.
But you're right.
Well, we always talk about $100,000 homes, so it's really hard to say, and you just actually referenced it, as when you, after you did, it was like, well, on a $100,000 home, it's like, yeah, right. So maybe both would, would just be helpful. That's, it's just, it's hard to put that on context, like I said. So I, I just have a couple of comments related to this. So we've been working and talking quite a bit about relief for property owners here in Hamilton County, knowing that many of them had their property tax bills go up related to the market and other things. And we all are looking for ways to provide some relief. And as was mentioned, I served on the governor's Property Tax Relief Working Group, a group of 11 people from school boards and the auditors' offices and county commissioners and, you know, head of the Ohio Roundtable and former legislators, all kind of trying to put our heads together to say, what can we do by way of relief? And, and some structural things that would be long-term, but some more immediate things that could provide some short-term relief. And so we came up with 20 suggestions. A lot of the relief pieces were things that I had advocated for, especially the expansion of the homestead exemption, which is part of what we're talking about here. And then also the circuit breaker, which is also a very targeted relief for people that are particularly low income and having a hard time staying in their homes. And then we talked a lot about providing relief for folks that are delinquent on their property taxes and giving them some relief from that so they can get back up to speed. We talked about deferral for people that are older and can't stay in their homes, and so we would defer any kind of increases for the next homeowner and put those in abeyance. And we talked about residential stability zones, we talked about all kinds of things. But we were very careful with all these recommendations to say that the, the obligation for providing the relief would be on the state, as it is now, for the homestead exemption, and as it should be, from my vantage point. Because when you think about how we got here, the state pays a very big part in that. Because if, from, and I'm just going to, I, I was in the legislature for eight years. We talked a lot about the unconstitutional way we fund schools in this state. We're still talking about it, nothing's been done. And were we to correct that and have the state pay a reasonable portion for school districts in the state of Ohio, we wouldn't be reliant on the property taxes at the local level. It's a shift in responsibility from the state to whether it's a school district, or a county government, or a township government. It is a tax shift from the state to the locals. And I, I, I railed against it when I was in the legislature, I'm going to rail against it now, because as we, you know, wrap our brains around how we can provide some relief, in the end, the state is the one that has the capacity to provide the relief and should have the responsibility to provide the relief. And even in this working group, and, and it was bipartisan, but I was in by far the minority politically on this group. Even in this group, we talked about this dynamic, and, and we even went to the point of saying to the state, by way of these recommendations, here are things that you can look at by way of paying for some of the relief. And one of the things that was identified are the tax exemptions that we give out, and Commissioner Reese, you might remember this, on an annual basis, when we were in the legislature, we gave, and these are tax breaks, basically, some of them make sense, some of them not. $8 billion a year, when we were in the legislature, we were giving away in tax breaks every year. Now it's up to $12 billion that we're giving away every year in the state of Ohio, by way of tax breaks, where you just to look at those, and we don't look at them annually, we do that as a county commission, when we've got some kind of tax incentive that we give to a company, every year we review, and we just had the report from the TIRC, and we make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do, creating jobs, creating economic development. State doesn't do that. And so were we to review these, my suspicion is, we would find that some of them are no longer relevant, or not doing what they're supposed to do, and we'd find that there was some money available in just that source alone, from the state, to provide some relief to taxpayers. Or the rainy day fund, that is, I think historically high at the moment, or many, many other things. And so it is, it is very frustrating that we, we sit here trying to figure out a way to provide relief to our taxpayers, when really, the state should be looking at this. It's a statewide issue, they've got the capacity to do it. We just had our budget meeting the other day, and we know what the budget is and how restricted our resources are. It's really going to be challenging in this budget cycle. And so I have a great deal of frustration with the state not having acted yet. Now, there are some bills that are in the hopper, and as you say, this referendum is a motivator for those that recognize that were we to eliminate property taxes in the state of Ohio, it would be devastating to not only us, but to all the other jurisdictions, to the school, I mean, devastating. And so the state legislature has to do something, they have to act, because that is not a good option. And I've heard them say it, I've heard many of them say it, that they are trying to figure out a way to provide relief without enough relief, so that there's less enthusiasm for the ballot initiative. So from what, where I sit, that's my vantage point here, on trying to understand, you know, what we can do and, and what the state should be doing, and what they are doing. So I appreciate the update on that. But we're not the only players in this, and, and I've heard other county commissioners contemplate doing this, and some have. And forgive me if, I, I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly, but I think Butler County was one of the ones that did it, and then a week later, we heard that the Butler County DDS levy is in financial emergency. Well, those things are tied together. So I, we, we don't act alone. I mean, thank you, Jeff, for the list of all of the impacted jurisdictions. If we were to do something like this, it is a long list, and is, and is way more of an impact than what Hamilton County would see. The school district, Cincinnati Public Schools, if we were to do homestead and owner occupied relief, it's over $7 million that we would, they would have, that would be the deficit, right? They wouldn't have that $7 million. Just, you know, as you run through these, Sycamore School District suffers over $1 million. Northwest School District, over $2 million. Some of the townships, Green Township is over $1 million. So, you know, we, we don't act in a vacuum here, and I'm very concerned that were we to do this, and I'm very frustrated because I want to do something, but were we to do this as a county, the impacts go way, way down through all of these other jurisdictions that have levies, to the tune of just the jurisdictions over $34 million. And then our own levies, and we've been getting reports from the TI, or the TLRC, about how challenged particularly children's services and DDS are. These are the two levies that would also be impacted by this. And so as we think about how we continue to provide these important services, to give them something, another financial hit, I think is problematic. So, you know, I appreciate the report, I too want to do something, but I believe that this is a state obligation, I think it's a state responsibility, I know they're talking about it, they have the ability to do it, I think we need to put pressure on them to do it, to say, you know, taxpayers are struggling, particularly seniors and those of low income, and they need to step up and provide some relief and abide by some of the recommendations that were provided, and provide some legislation to that effect, and do it sooner than later. So I, I didn't mean to grandstand, I'm very frustrated by this issue, especially having served on a committee where we made very thoughtful recommendations, bipartisan recommendations, and I am hoping that the homestead expansion especially will be something that's picked up. They can do it just like that, the system's in place, we know who's eligible, and they could do it just like that. And so I'm, I remain hopeful that they will do it. I'm also frustrated by this timeframe that they've put on us, they, they don't have that same timeframe on themselves, and yet they have chosen to do it on us. So, so anyway, I will leave it at that, I didn't, I apologize for the, the length of my remarks, but I feel very strongly about this one. Commissioner Somerudumis.
Thanks for all the information, Jeff and Anson, and Enrique also. But we definitely have to do something, there's no doubt about that. And as was said earlier, one of the entities moved too fast, in my opinion, and now, as was mentioned, fiscal emergency is in, is in the forefront. So I don't want us to sit on it, but I don't want us to move too fast that we are in trouble financially. And also, all people are being affected. We used to say the seniors and the low income, but all people that have property are being affected, and there's so much going on right now in the legislation, legislature, as was said earlier, that we need to see what's going to happen with that, but not wait long, but make sure we provide some relief. And my relief, as I think about property tax reduction, would be for all people that have properties, not just a single group of people. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you very much. As was stated earlier, yeah, I was on the state legislature, as you've indicated as well, in the super minority for eight and a half years. And you're right, we introduced legislation on the Democratic side to say that we've got to deal with, how do we fund public education? It can't be relied upon just on property taxes, but we've been talking and talking and talking, and the legislature has never moved. They've never moved. And the $8 billion in tax breaks, which I know we didn't go with, that moved, but nothing to help the everyday citizens. I too agree that this is on the backs of the state, but I also agree that there are certain things that's on the backs of the federal government, and they're not doing it. I remember at the state legislature, I gave a speech on the House floor, where I called it trickle-down taxation, where they cut taxes at the state level and push it down to the local level, and force the local levels to have to have more levies and increase taxes, and that's what you call trickle-down taxation. But I also know, being at the legislature and being former president of the Ohio Legislative Black Caucus, sometimes they would have us get on committees and, you know, they'll put one or two Democrats, and, and they get a committee, and nothing ever came of the committee. And someone one time told me, the way that elected officials want to kill something, they send it to a committee to study the problem. But when they want to get something done, they get in the room, and next thing you know, it's in the budget. If it's not in the budget, it normally doesn't happen. But if you want to kill something, put a committee together and let them study the problem. And then, next thing you know, it goes to somebody's file cabinet, dust, and it never happens. The only reason that this issue, the legislature at the state, both in the House and the Senate, and the governor, is because the people have risen up and said, we're going to put it on the ballot. Same thing happened locally with Hyde Park, until they said, the people said, we're going to put it on the ballot, the elected officials, they just, we're going to study, we're going to look at it till we don't know, we can't do it, we can't do that. The only reason is because the people are saying, we're going to put it on the ballot, and if it goes to the ballot, I'm not sure too many people would go in and vote, not to give themselves a break. It got to this point because the politicians never took this seriously, and never came with results. They've been bills introduced, people who have bills, they blocked them, they study them, you know, I've been there when they take a bill and they got, oh my gosh, you should know the process, get interested parties, get the committees together, go study it, then when you finally get something, then they got to send it over to the Senate, and they got to do it all over again. And then next thing you know, they don't run out of time, you got two years to try to get it done. You got two years to try to get it done, or you got to start all over again. And the people, they just want to make it plain. We are in unprecedented times. Now, we just had the Bengals in here, and we were grinning, and smiling, and said, we can, we can figure out a way to get a deal done. We clapping. Now, just one presentation later, we saying, we ain't got no money, and we're saying it's restricted. Now, let me be clear, the Bengals and the Reds, that fund is sales tax. The people went to the ballot and increased the sales tax. We decided, not us just here, but the ones before us, we decided to make it restricted. It ain't restricted by law. It could be used to help the general fund, but we decided to make it restricted. So if we could come up with 850 million plus interest, which would get us to $1 billion, how in the world, in these unprecedented times? We got federal workers that's furloughed. They used to say, if you get a federal job, you in. They're working right now with no pay, and they're telling them, when you go back, they not going to give you the back pay. And if you don't work today, you're fired, because they want to already reduce govern, government. And I agree what was said earlier, I don't want something just for seniors, we got to have something for seniors, because now we need something for everybody. That federal worker that can't make that mortgage this month. That person that was working at the hospital, one of the highest ranking, at her level, they got rid of her position. And she buried her husband three days later, and she got some bills to pay. Prices are going up, and they're getting ready to cut potentially food stamps, right before Thanksgiving. We are in unprecedented times, so what we used to do, and how we used to do it, that's out the window. People are in a 911 right now, to hold on to their homes. And the only thing we have, is we have everything for organizations, we just saw, we got 3CDC, we can do a hotel, we can do all this stuff, but wait a minute, it's on this side of the aisle. Bengals come in, we can do it, it's great, we can do all this stuff, but it's on this side of the aisle. So the people say, well, where the hell is the people's fund? How do I hold on to my house? I appreciate the stadium, but I want to hold on to the house I got. And so I just think, I agree that we got to be mad at the state, we got to hold the state accountable and all of that, and the governor, he's going into his lame duck, he's going into the lame duck area, era now. That's where he's headed to. And if this makes the ballot, we going to have to deal with it anyway, because I think that it probably, if it was up there today, it'd pass, I don't know if something would change. So we would have to deal with no property taxes anyway, because the people are fed up, tired of the politicians saying they ain't got no money, but they can do it for the big boys, but they can't do it for my house, they can do it for this, but they can't do it for me. They tired of it. So now they're going into what you call self-preservation. They don't understand how a bill becomes a law, and they don't care about all that. Go over here, and you wrote it, and it's going over here, and we done met, and they want action, because the bills are due. They don't stop because we looking into it. It's the first of the month. Duke Energy want to be paid, and they done went up on the price. They got to go get some groceries, and those prices are high. The property reassessment, the state never stopped on that, they went on up on your, and I agree with Commissioner President Dreehaus, when she said, you know, it's frustrating. But we have to have a right now plan, which we have to vote on every year. So what we vote on this year might not be, maybe next year to get under control. And so we had to each put in our budgets, and turn them in, and I turned in a budget that put every potential option to give the homeowner occupied a break. Doubling the homestead aggressively, I, I would support it. But I don't like that you only can make $40,000, because a lot of people got left out. I think you only said only $33,000, that's low. But reducing the inside millage, I want to look at it. I want to look at that, I wanted to look at. I want to look at the full 30%. Now, they'll say, oh, we got a new lease, but the people never voted on that lease. They voted on the other one, it never went back to the people, and they said they wanted a 30% break. And they said, oh, it's not that much money. Well, if it's not that much money, then give it to them, since it's not that much money. Now, I've introduced that every single year. Expansion of our affordable housing project portfolio, we've talked about that, I think we're looking into that with CDF, make sure we got veteran housing and senior housing. It's not enough senior housing. I got a lady right now, every year got to move. This woman worked the job, good job, retired, sold her house, and Kate now about to be on the streets. It's shameful. I go to bed every night, and I can't get her face out of my mind, because I say, how can I be down here, and we, and we walking around, talking about we done done this and done that, and this woman is about to be on the streets. The other thing is, I want to, of course, we had a down payment assistance program, I think we should have. But the home property tax relief has to be part of the affordable housing conversation. There's no sense of pushing new homeownership if people can't afford the taxes. The taxes is higher than the home that they paying for right now. People have paid off their home, but can't afford to stay because of the property taxes. Property taxes is the number one issue. I appreciate HOODay, but it's not the number one issue. We are in a 911 survival. So yes, the state should be doing it. I called on the governor if he wanted to do something, don't just put the committee together, freeze the property taxes until you come up with a solution. If there's no deadline and no pressure point, state government will run this thing another 30 years, be talking about what we looking at doing, because there's no deadline, because the budget has been passed. So I'm looking for real help, a right now program, because right now, we got to make a decision, right now, people got to pay something, they're trying to hang on, and maybe next year, we got something else, I don't know. We got a short term, and we got a long term. I see the state is long term, because they got to take it to the House, and you see now, he get, they haven't even acted on his vetos. Ain't, ain't thought nothing about it. And at a time where people are furloughed, losing their jobs, seeing citizens can't halfway make it, they done retired, paid their dues, can't get no help, reassessment still going up, I don't know any $100,000 homes anymore, in terms of value. If you sell your home, right, you make some money, but now you can't afford to rent somewhere, because there's nothing available, there's no product. Just met with CMHA CEO, we don't have no more vouchers, and over 2,000 people waiting, and can't get a voucher. So I'm for looking at all options, even if we have to make adjustment on some of these big projects, got to make adjustments. Maybe we can't do them right now, maybe we got to hold it. If we can do them both, great. The other thing I ask Mr. Ludo, I need to know all accounts that have county money, because the last time we did a budget, we needed some money, we said we have interest, we had some interest money. I didn't know anything about it, I learned about it. So I want to comb all accounts. I want to know those that are self-restricted versus those that are really restricted. And my first priority is to give a break to the taxpayers. I'm looking for all breaks that we possibly can give, if we can give it. Now, is it just our fault? No, it's not just on us. But there are things that we can do, that we should do, that I'm recommending, that we look at, it should be all hands on deck. I can't just pass it off and say, man, go up I-71. Now, we need to fight I-71, but the alternative of doing nothing is the people self-preservation. They going to take it to the ballot, and they're going to make the decision, and they're going to choose their own budget over a county budget. They got to balance their, their budget, before they can help us balance this budget. So if we don't want them to take it into their own hands, and when they take it in their own hands, they not thinking about all the stuff we talking about. They're going to take it to the ballot and hear directly from what do the voters want to do. And that's what they've gotten to. Desperate times call for desperate measures. And the people have said, we got to take it in our own hands. So I'm hoping that we're able to have in our budget some help, we have done it in the past, I don't want to say we haven't done anything. When we got that ARPA money, we didn't have to do it. We put $60 million in affordable housing, one of the things I said was, wait a minute, we got to help people afford the house they already have. And so I want to thank my colleagues, we took $5 million, and then we added another million, we did $6 million in ARPA money to help people with their property taxes, and their behind mortgages. What I want to say is, people don't want to be behind on the property tax, because that's on your credit and bad and everything. We need to be able to have the most, whatever we do, I like to have it to be flexible, so people don't get behind, people don't have to go to the courthouse. So I agree that I would like to have something that is not restrictive in terms of people's income, because the middle class pay for everything and never get a break. They, oh, you're just a few dollars over, we can't help you. Rich people, obviously, they got people that know how to put their stuff in LLCs and estates and trust and everything, so they're able to shield themselves. We just saw it at the Millennium, a property next to the Millennium that we own, that somebody gave to trust and LLCs, and we got to pay them. You got to be real smart to pull something like that off. So in my budget that I presented, I want to fully look at the points that I made, I'm interested, I support it. If I can double it, it'll help you with the homestead, I'm for it. If I can help you with the inside millage, I'm for it. 30%, I think if I can, if I can hold up, make sure the Bengals stay, I want to make sure you stay in Hamilton County. I'm for, of course, expansion of our portfolio, and any and all discounts we have, as we wait on the state to come up with something, which probably won't. If they miraculously do pass something, it probably won't take place till after we have passed our budget. So those are the points that I have, I totally agree, the state has screwed the citizens of Ohio, the homeowners of Ohio, but I would like to exhaust all tools that we can, as we are moving forward. So those are my points. Unprecedented times calls for unprecedented ideas, and I'm hopeful that we can help people hold on until the state finally does the right thing. So thank you.
Thank you. Just to put a finer point on some of the external things, and, and we've mentioned it here, the impact of doing the expanded homestead, and the impact of the piggyback OOC to the county general fund is 1.6 million, but then to the levies is 5.6 million, and then to the jurisdictions is 34 million. So I wish we could operate in a vacuum on this, but we cannot, because the impacts are broad, and really would impact many others beyond just our own general fund. So the one thing that was mentioned, and I'm, I'm glad that Commissioner Reese brought it up, because it's not only, the challenges for us are not only state challenges or state impacts, but also federal. We're in the middle of a shutdown right now, and it's getting worse, for all the reasons you, you mentioned, but particularly related to SNAP benefits. So we are going to ask Michael Patton to come in and talk about the impact to SNAP recipients here in Hamilton County. I think we've all, I remember if we had a presentation, or we, we've talked to Michael, about when the impacts would really start, when people would stop getting the benefits. And he said 30 days-ish. Well, we're right around 30 days-ish. And so I think we need to be very clear with the public that this might be coming, and these impacts are real, and make sure that they're aware of it, and whatever we can do by way of relief, with the Free Store Food Bank, for instance, we should be poised to do that. But we're going to bring him in on Tuesday, if, if we all agree, to give us a report on what those impacts are going to look like here, because we're right around the 30-day mark. And in addition to that, CMHA, similarly, will have the same kind of impact, so we'll bring Greg Johnson in as well. And if there are any ideas of any other organization that we should bring in to kind of, it's, we're, we're painting this picture for our constituents, so they understand this, and know what might be coming here within the next week or two. So we're going to plan to do that on Tuesday, because I think we owe it to the public to have that conversation in public, to make sure that people understand the real impact of this government shutdown and, and 30 days out, because that's kind of the delineation point, what it looks like after that 30 days, because from my understanding, all hell breaks loose after 30 days. So with your deference, commissioners, I'm going to go ahead and move forward on that, and open to suggestions about anybody that you think on the federal level, like CMHA, like JFS, that are impacted in this way, be happy to invite them also. So I just want to put that out there.
Could I ask you on that?
Yeah.
Also, Senator, our Senator asked us, Kathy Ingram, if we would do a resolution, and maybe after we had the presentation, we could have some type of resolution, so our county is on record. But the other thing I'd ask...
Can I interject real quick, because I have a thought? So we, we talked about the presentation, and then doing something more public-facing, maybe a press conference after the presentation with the state reps and state senators, because they have been also raising the alarm, and to make sure that we're all doing this together, invite everyone, all of them, to come and participate in that way.
Yep, that'd be great, and then maybe we have something we can pass as a resolution, supporting them, that we could send up there. But the second thing I'd ask Mr. Ludo about too, was even us reaching out, because this would be a 911. Now, the people that, you know, not just the citizens benefit from SNAP, but the grocery carriers as well, so Kroger's reaching out to the CEO there, because I think, not just Kroger's, but others, that's where they use the SNAP benefits, and that's, those are dollars that affect, and then that's trickle down to their workers as well. So I know we, Free Store Food Bank definitely should be in, and then seeing what Kroger's headquarters down the street, what can they do, because I'd like for us to, you know, report what the problem is, like you said, but then looking, is there anything we can do on a temporary basis that can, you know, food, you got to have food.
And I, and we have a reallocation of ARPA coming up, and maybe we accelerate that reallocation. We've done this a couple times before for Free Store Food Bank, all three of us have advocated for that. So maybe if we can accelerate that reallocation, and provide that, that money to Free Store Food Bank sooner than later, so that they have the capacity to provide the relief, because they are also under strain, right? So all of the above. So we'll have some conversation then on Tuesday about all of that, and maybe a more public-facing, my office is working, and I thought I think they've reached out to both offices about what that looks like, but, but making sure that the citizens understand what's happening here.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, that's what we've got on our agenda, so I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehaus?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese? Commissioner Reese?